Alright, welcome back. It's uh 6:15 PM Monday, February the 15th, 2021. And we're gonna go ahead and drive around the the Moorestown East High School. While I uh read this letter to you here and um discuss um some of the waste within the schools and sanitation issues within the schools. So first, I'm gonna start off with the uh mission statement of the Hamlin County Board of Education. Welcome from the superintendent. On behalf of the Board of Education in the office of the superintendent, I want to welcome you to the Hamlin County Department of Education's official website. This webpage has been created to provide our parents, students, and community members with important information related to the school system. We exist to serve you and it is extremely important to us that we are receptive and responsive to your thoughts, concerns, and suggestions. Alright, so they want your thoughts, concerns, and suggestions. Now remember that when I continue to talk after this. Please let us know if we can revise this page or adapt school policy and procedures 'tis better so serve your needs. We are committed to providing each child under our care with the best possible educational and extracurricular opportunities. We are dedicated to implementing a curriculum that is rigorous, challenging, and designed to prepare our students for post-secondary success. We are equally committed to creating a strong institutional program that will address the individual learning needs of each child. Our institutional approach will be child-centered. We will build our individual strengths and will provide effective intervention to areas needing attention. To accomplish this goal, we need to create a positive working relationship with our community and parents. The best educational experience for children will be achieved when there is a strong partnership among community, parents, and school officials. We are highly committed to providing your child with the best we have as educators. We will be relentless in our efforts to ensure they are successful. Please don't hesitate to contact us if we can be of assistance. Thanks for being a part of the Hamlin County School family. Sincerely, Jeff Perry. The teachers do an excellent job. They do have a lot of benefits for students um that need extra help and so on and so forth. And I applaud them for that. I definitely give them credit in regards to that. Look at that sheriff's car right there with the skull on the back and that dark tinted window in the front. Is that skull? Right there is that zooming one I'm on. Is that appropriate? Can you zoom more? That's it. That little phone's great, but only so much. So you've got a skull on the side of a police car with their blue line, I'm sure through it. Um car 154. So I've already received my request on tinted windows for police vehicles and that right there is against the law. Alright, so let's talk a little bit about the waste within the school board, okay? I have four children that go to two different schools. They receive notices. A lot of times when it's um you know for the whole school board, I receive four of those notices. Many times they they're just a notice, they don't need to be signed, they don't need to be returned. But they are there um and we do receive four of them. I think that's a waste. I mean, if it's gonna be for the entire school district and you know that there's multiple students, um you know by the second, third week, you should know, hey, we need to uh only give this notice to the oldest student that's in the system. Alright, to the oldest student that's in the system. You don't need to give me four copies. I don't need four copies. The next thing is every single paper that we get from Hamlin County School Board is printed in English and Spanish. Yes, it is on the same page as on both, right? This is front and back. But that's waste, alright? It's wasteful because even though they are saving the paper, they are using double, they are using double the amount of toner that they would be using. They are using double the amount of electricity that they would be using. Double the amount of wear and tear on the copy machine, right? So all that facilitates to more cost, more waste, alright? I don't need Spanish. All I speak is English. If after two or three weeks, the teachers don't know what students' parents speak English and what students' parents speak Spanish, that they need to really start focusing on that and stop the waste. Because if they're standing there waiting for that to be printed up, they're standing there twice as long, okay? So a five-minute print takes 10 minutes now. And we've already discussed um you know the the extra waste of material, paper, toner, and electricity and the wear and tear. Um next, I would like to talk to you about sanitation in the schools. This year with this um pandemic that we've been um going through, there's been a lot of change. Students are required to wear a mask the entire time they're at school other than when they're eating or drinking. And that's even limited. Um most of them do that within their own classroom. They don't even get to sit and have conversation at lunch anymore. So sanitation, the computers, because a lot of this has gone to computers and even though the students, at least in middle school, um they have a laptop that was issued to them. So even when they're in school, they're doing homework on or work on that laptop. So what does the teacher do? Okay, the teacher helps students on their particular laptops. So the teacher does whatever she does on her laptop and then she will walk around the classroom asking students if they need any help or helping each student in particular. So they help them on the computer. The teacher, teachers, because there's multiple of them. I'm not gonna say every single last one of them because I don't know that for fact. But you all can ask your students how they do it in their school and see if it's the same and you can leave the comment in the comment section. But she uses her computer and they walk around and they help out everybody else's on their computers. So if the student, if the teacher is sick or has touched anything that has the virus on it, now she is spreading it to all the students via their computer, through their keyboard. So the first person is getting minimum. By the time they are to their last person, they are uh they get the most risk, right? Because now they have from everybody um what is going on and uh that's kind of disgusting that they are not taking in consideration the safety of the students. The students are being trying to be safe. They're wearing their mask as required. They're washing their hands as required. But if you're gonna go and you're gonna touch everybody's tab uh laptop and then when you're done, then you're gonna sanitize or wash your hands, that's not working. Okay, that's just as bad as you not sanitizing school buses in between the pickup of each individual different school. Okay, you're cross-contaminating. So either don't do it and don't force these students to wear masks because most of the calls that I've received this year that say whether or not it's a student or a staff member that has confirmed positive on the COVID test, I believe it's pretty much almost equal between Hillcrest and Meadowview for the students are getting it and the teachers and the faculty. Now look how many students there are in comparison to faculty. If we were talking one for one, then we could say, eh, you know what, it's about even. But no, we're not talking one for one. So the teachers are going out places, contracting COVID, coming back to the schools and working until the symptoms come in and then they you know they stop working and then they go get tested and we hear about it. But there's nothing really being done, okay? It's just kind of like, wear a face mask, but there's no what is a face mask? What is a face covering, right? It could have holes in it. It could be the most protective. As a matter of fact, you should be wearing two and three face masks if you really wanna not spread the disease, alright? That's what it should be. Two or three face masks if you do not wanna spread the disease. Otherwise, you're just, you're doing what the CDC says that um you know they feel is good. And you know, if there was some kind of an actual organization that would put requirements on certain things, then it'd be more enforceable. But it's nothing but a joke and um there's um things in the works right now, you know, for higher levels in Tennessee that is gonna do away with the liability hopefully for places of employers so we don't have to wear um or employer employees don't have to necessarily wear a mask while they're working if they choose not to. So I'm gonna read you this letter that was attached to my son's uh report card. And um it has a lot to do with um students going to school or doing the uh the virtual education process. Now a lot of people chose to just stay virtual. Um my kids, my students, uh they go to school. Uh I want them to associate with other students. I don't want them to not be around any type of um other viruses or bacterias or anything. Their body needs that in order to be able to get stronger and fight things in the future. And right now, being masked up, that's doing the total opposite. These kids are gonna end up getting extremely sick that have been cooped up. So let me read this to you. It says, "We started the school year with a process allowing middle and high school students to stay home if they were not feeling well." Hey, that's a great process. I I appreciate you not forcing a student to go to school um if they're not feeling well. "Our intent with this flexibility was to prevent potential contagious students from coming to school and spreading illness. However, many of our students are beginning to over- over-tily abuse this process. Many students are simply staying home because they have slept in, want to avoid taking a test, or want to avoid a particular class, or it is simply an inconvenience getting dressed and coming to school. This creates a number of issues for us and has created extremely poor work eth- work habits for many of our students." So by them being able to have the choice of staying home, they are now saying, and obviously it's gotta be fact, otherwise they wouldn't be saying it, that it has created extremely poor work habits for many of our students. Well, duh, did you think it's not? Did you really think that it wasn't gonna make them lazy? Did you really think that it wasn't gonna uh um make them prosper in their vocabulary and their skills of being able to hold a conversation? Did you not see this happening? You're a school board. I saw this happening. Okay, you guys should understand the consequences of things that you do prior to you doing them. There's consequences in everything you do and you have to live to your consequences. And it might not affect you, but affects people, okay? And that's just one of them right there. Now, you have made lazy, extremely poor work habits in children. We've already had this problem with our upcoming generations. Trying to hire anybody that's under the age of 25 is is almost an exaggeration. It doesn't happen. Okay, so let's continue this. Several of our students are suffering academically from this process. So their grades are suffering. Alright, their grades are suffering. As of October 26, 2020, so now we're in February, middle of February, okay? So this was just now attached to um the uh um report cards that they received like two weeks ago, so the beginning of February. "We are implementing new policies for students who are attending in person but who have a need to attend virtually for a limited period of time." This is gonna get good. Hey, don't leave me now. This is this is interesting. Don't don't leave me. "All of the following rules are pertaining to all middle school and high school students with the exception of Lincoln Middle School because they adopted a different instructional model who are attending class in person." Okay, so this is kinda like the 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 school bus thing where not all school buses are have the same rules that the rules can change depending on the bus driver, alright? So Lincoln Middle School is the only school out of everybody in the district who decided to adopt a different instructional model, alright? Why are they not all the same? Come on, either one's good or they're all good or one's better than the other. But you have two models and now students from two different sides are being treated differently? That don't add up. So let's go with the rules. There's seven rules. Rule number one, students who have elected to participate in person should attend classes at school unless they are sick or have a legitimate reason for being absent from school. Alright, so if you are sick or you have a legitimate reason from being absent in school, otherwise they're saying you should be there. Number two, "Students may participate in no more than five virtual days per semester if they are feeling sick." Alright, so let's finish that number two. "We will start to count this on October 26 for this semester. Past participation in virtual classes will not be counted towards these five exemptions. Students will only receive five virtual participation days during second semester." So here we are, we've now started our fourth semester and they're now just now getting this information out. Alright, so five days out of a whole semester, which I believe is like 45 days, okay? Five of those days. So if a student wakes up, doesn't feel good one day and we don't wanna send him to school, that's one of their days. And they can only do that five times. So now let's say a student in the class or whatever um you know has been confirmed with COVID. Now I might not wanna send my son back to school for the remainder of the week just to make sure that other students in that classroom did not get COVID and pass it around. That's a safety thing. I should be able to do that for my son, my student. But now I'm limited only five. So it's, do I send him or do I not? Oh, he's got a uh maybe he doesn't have a fever, but he's got a cough. Do I send him to school today because he's got a cough? I don't want that to be held on. So you know, it's kind of like uh you know, employees, they have to go to work because they have to be paid and they don't wanna lose their job, regardless if they've got a little cough or not. They've gotta go because they don't wanna be reprimanded. Now you're reprimanding students that are trying to be safe, okay? It's one or the other. Either you want them to be safe and not be in school when they could possibly be sick and you want them to stay home or you don't, alright? This is a double-edged sword right here. In the comments, tell me what you think. I don't know, this is just what my own theory on it. Number three, "Students must participate fully in the entire lesson if they elect to attend virtually. The camera must be turned on and they must be engaged throughout the entire lesson. Failure to do this will result in being counted absent for the day." That's the way it should be. Because if a student goes to school and sleeps all day long and doesn't open up his books, he's there, okay? But is he really there? He should also be marked as absent, but he's there, okay? So yeah, if they're not logged in and they're sleeping or whatever, then yes, they should be marked absent. But don't hold that against people that you know may only be there a certain amount of times. If in that time that they're there, they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing, mark them absent. Number four, "Parents must contact the school." This is a good one here. "Parents must contact the school and let us know their child will be attending virtually for that day. We want parents to notify us because many students, many students, were participating virtually, but their parents thought they were attending in person." This helps to create more accountability for students. It also helps parents better informed of where their children are during the day. So they want accountability for the students, but they hate accountability for the government. And apparently, there's been a bunch of kids that have been attending virtually and their parents think that they're participating at in school, okay? So now that means there's a lot of students at school, or I'm sorry, doing virtual and their parents are at work, okay? All day long. They have freedom of what they wanna do at their house and nobody is there to watch them. That goes back to the suffering academically from the process because they have nobody there to make them do anything. Um and also poor work habits of the students. That goes back to the top of the list. Number five, "Students may lose their opportunity to participate in virtual sessions if they are not performing at the acceptable academic level. Students must maintain at least a C average to participate in virtual option and must be completing all assignments." Alright, so now all of a sudden, if you are failing, now you have to start going to school. Why don't you just open the school back up? Come on, let's get them back in school, all of them, every student, back in school, five days a week. Students being taught by teachers in a controlled environment. Let's do that. Hamlin County, you're hurting our students. You're hurting our future. Number six, "Students will be considered absent if they exceed the five virtual day allowance." So even if they decide to continue using virtual for over five days, now it's been, you're absent, you're considered absent. So why even have them sign on? Might as well just let your kids just throw their feet up, watch cartoons. That's what you're saying right here. If they're gonna be absent, they're gonna be absent, okay? "These absences will be counted towards their unexcused days unless a parent or doctor note is submitted. In that case, the absent will be excused." So unless a parent or a doctor issues you a note. So all a parent has to do is say, yeah, you know, my student didn't feel good. Do you really need a damn note? You really need that? Students are students, okay? It's the adults, it's the parents that have to get the kids there on time. If the kid's not there on time or not in school all day, it's not usually, it's not the student's fault, okay? It's not the student's fault. So why are there even unexcused absences? It's not like a student tied up their parents and said, I wasn't going to school today. I'm not going to school today. This parent can make up any reason, any excuse, okay? It's just a more of a, hey, yeah, we know your student was absent. That's all it is. And hey, because you gave us an excuse, they're good to go. That's that's crazy. Number seven, and the last one. "Students may not attend school for certain blocks or period and then check out to attend other classes virtually." So you can't go to school for half a day and then check out and do the rest of your schooling. They're saying, if you have to check out to go to the doctor or whatever, take the rest of the day off. "Students must remain in school during the entire day to be considered present." It's not the entire day, it's half the day to be present. So if you've got something to do at the beginning, you can take your kid afterwards. If you've got something for the end of school day, doctor's appointment, they're not considered absent all day. "Students will also have the option of checking out if they are sick as we have done in the past, but students will not be allowed to check out for non-medical reasons." "Principals may grant permission for certain situations where the student has a legitimate reason." Alright, so now it's the student's legitimate reason, not the parent's legitimate reason and the principal has to say. Okay, there needs to be rules. Plain and simple, there needs to be rules and that's where the traditions begin, right? A set thing of rules for everybody across the board, not what you want it to be. So we have lack of sanitation inside the school of teachers touching each other's keyboards. We have waste of funds uh from using the printer, the copier for front and back in English and Spanish. And um we see that they are starting to actually figure out that what they're doing is really messing up, okay? It's not helping at all. It's messing up the future of our kids. And we don't even know how many years it's gonna take to get that back, okay? So some of these students that might be in middle school, they might be able to come back from it. Elementary might be able to come back from it. But students that are in middle school or high school that are graduating in a year or two, you know, they may never get to step foot back into a classroom. This virtual might be the next thing. They're not gonna understand responsibility of going to work, waking up on time, getting dressed, being presentable, holding a conversation at a job. They're not gonna have all that, okay? We need to wake up, open our eyes. This is damaging. This is extremely damaging. Please leave your comments on the comment section. Hit the subscribe button. Hit the subscribe button, tell your friends to check out these videos. Um hit the thumbs up, let me know you like what you're seeing. And call, call in to the school board. Get, tell them what your opinion is. It says in his mission, in the mission statement, that they want parents to communicate concerns about policy and ways of changing, things that need to be changed. That's your all's job on the other end. If you're watching this video, that's your job. I've brought you the information that I've been able to gather. Now it's time for a change. This is where you all come in. Call the Hamlin County Board of Education, speak to whomever you need to speak to, and let's make a change together. Thank you for joining me. Please tell your friends about these videos. We have upcoming meetings this week um that people need to attend. We will get you that information on times and dates. I'll have that posted for you tomorrow. So if you don't ring that bell, you're gonna miss important stuff. Thank you for joining. Have a good evening.